Good morning. This is the Thurston County Board of Commissioners Agenda Setting. It is Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. It is 9:03 a.m. This session is set to go until 11:00 a.m. We're at 3000 Pacific Avenue, Room 110. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. Carolina Mejia, I am Commissioner, our Chair. Taya Mensah is joining us virtually, as well as Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Emily Claus. We'll start our, also in the boardroom, we have County Manager Leonard Hernandez, as well as Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder, our Clerk of the Board Amy Davis. We'll start our agenda with a review of the Board of County Commissioners' draft agenda for our meeting of October 15th, 2024. So we'll call the meeting to order at 2:00 p.m. The pledge of allegiance to be led by Commissioner Mejia, and there will be an approval of the Tuesday, October 15th, 2024 agenda. We have a presentation, which is the proclamation for Flood Awareness Week. Amy?
Good morning. Amy Davis, Clerk of the Board. We will have members from emergency services here with us to accept and present this proclamation.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Then there will be an opportunity for the public to address the board and county manager's update. County Manager?
I don't have any updates this morning.
Thank you. Any questions for the county manager? Okay. Then we have consent items, 3A through 3F, starting with item 3A, which is from Community Planning and Economic Development, is to set a public hearing on the agriculture zoning update, and this is a follow-up from the work session we had last week. And Ashley, or?
Well, let us round her up. Do you mind if we skip to the next item?
Sure. Go ahead. Item 3B from Human Resources, we're going to go ahead and skip to the next item while we get Ashley to come in. Item 3B is a resolution setting 2025 benefit contributions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tara Wickline, Conversation and Benefits Manager. This resolution is tied to the session we had yesterday about setting the county contributions for 2025 premiums. The board gave direction to set the highest standard plan as Kaiser/Washington Value Plan, as well as authorizing HR to change our vision plan to an enhanced vision plan for next year.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Just want to thank you, Tara, for all the hard work you and your team did to research that job.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I will say that we have definitely been hearing a lot of responses from the email that went out last night, very, very positive. Employees are very, very grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 3C. Actually, 3C, 3D, and 3E are all information technology. The first item is IT networking equipment purchase for Courthouse campus. Sheri Elg, Director?
Good morning. Sheri Elg, IT Director. We have a couple of requests for purchase. The first one is purchase of IT networking equipment, purchase for the Courthouse campus. The request is to replace, or to purchase replacement equipment in the amount of $94,000, it's $94,737.39, to replace all the hardware at the Courthouse. Buildings 1 through 7, no, 6, sorry.
And Tric, can you talk a little bit about why we need to do this? And the lifespan?
Actually, I brought Evan, our new network supervisor, because I thought you might have some of these questions, and he can come up here and explain that.
Hi, Evan Hallmark. I'm the IT Network Supervisor. So the current equipment that is in place at the Courthouse campus is outdated and is actually at end-of-life, meaning the manufacturer no longer supports it. So we are looking to transition to Fortinet equipment, which is our current network standard. It is well-supported and would ease our troubleshooting efforts, not having to negotiate between two different kinds of technology.
So lifespan of those new units that you're buying?
Five to seven years.
Which kind of corresponds with our bridge plan for those facilities anyways, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We collect the money in our rates every year in our reserve account for replacing networking equipment.
The county is fairly new, right?
I have been one month and three days.
Welcome. I've never seen you in employee orientation.
He's doing great.
Any questions from the board?
Not from me. County Manager asked my question.
How long are the, how long have we had the equipment that we've got that's outdated now?
Oh geez, I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of seven or eight years. I'd have to confirm that.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next IT item, item 3D, the contract renewal of leased data connections.
Okay, so in addition to having network equipment, we also need a way for it to be connected. So this is a renewal for the current, the agreement with Lumen for the current redundant internet and dated data connections to five of our buildings. Connections are $460 a month, and this is a two-year contract in the amount of $55,273.
Any questions? Not seeing any. Okay. Move on to item 3E, which is the renewal of annual maintenance for Amanda software.
Yes, we're not quite done with our permit tracking system implementation yet. So we need to renew the existing permitting software, which is Amanda. And the amount of that is $110,000, $110,748 to renew that for another year.
Thank you. Any questions? Not seeing any. Okay, thank you so much, Sheri.
Thank you.
Please, and we can cover 3A if you'd like.
Okay, we'll go back to item 3A. Ashley?
My apologies, my eight o'clock ran a little bit over. Good morning, Commissioners. This is a follow-up to the briefing that we had last week for the agriculture zoning update. This is a request to set a public hearing to move this project forward so that the board can take final action by the end of the year with the once-a-year comprehensive plan update.
Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say it seems like this is well timed. We knew when I was on the ad tour the other day, there was a lot of compliments about this approach, and we received some positive feedback in our emails. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Not seeing any. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and moving to item 3F, Public Works, which is the designation letter for direct negotiation with the Confederate Tribes of the Chehalis Reservation.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager. My name is Madalyn Smith, Thurston County Engineer. This item's requesting permission for the Public Works Director to negotiate right-ofway with the Chehalis Tribe. Public Works is beginning the right-ofway acquisition phase for a project to address safety and traffic congestion at the intersections of Old Highway 99 and Sergeant Road and 201st Avenue in the Grand Mound area. The Bureau of Indian Affairs requires the agency's legislative body delegate the authority to negotiate the right-ofway. So again, this item is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to authorize the Public Works Director to negotiate right-ofway acquisition with the Chehalis Tribe.
Perfect. Anything to add, Craig? I saw your camera pop up.
I do not. Matt covered it. Thank you.
Okay. Questions from the board? Comments?
Just a quick question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
When you make that agreement, will it come back in front of the board for final authority?
I do not believe so, but that's something that, Craig, unless you know, that's something that I'll have to follow up with you next week on.
No, once the letter has been signed, we typically do not come back to the board. The right-ofway phase has already been authorized for this project.
I guess I'm only wondering about the final end agreement to make sure that Legal has had a chance to review it, and the board also is able to look at, like, I mean, I trust what you guys are doing, but I just wonder how that final authority ends up. And I guess I'd have a question for Legal. Would that be a normal course of events?
Just walk me through it, Matt. So we sign this letter, we issued a letter, and then there's, is there an agreement drawn up based on the letter?
Correct.
Okay.
So it would go through the same, we'd go through the same required, this is federal money, so we have to follow the federal process to acquire any, any right-ofway.
That agreement that's drawn up, does our legal team review that, even though it may not come back to the board for final execution? Is that part of the process?
The agreement, correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, but I believe the agreement is already been, it's a standard form, which has been reviewed by Legal. Am I correct, Craig?
Yeah, the acquisition process is fairly straightforward. Legal has weighed in multiple times over the years on all of our documents.
So we'd be using the same agreement that we use on, on all of our federal projects? Actually, all of our county projects?
Those agreements Legal has reviewed and commented on in the development of those prior to ever signing them?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess one, one final question for Matt. Does this then complete that roundabout phase in Grand Mound that we've been working on for that bypass portion of, I guess it goes behind the Dairy Queen there somewhere?
You're exactly right, Commissioner. So this, this will allow traffic that's trying to bypass the Grand Mound area. If you're heading east on US 12, they can get off at the Sergeant Road Roundabout, go down Sergeant Road, and eventually you would run into this roundabout. And so, yes, this is, this project will install a roundabout at 201st Avenue. So when you get to Sergeant Road, you take a right, go around the roundabout at Sergeant Road, and then continue north or south.
Mr. Edwards?
Go ahead, Commissioner Fornier.
I just want to comment, it goes behind where the Dairy Queen was 25 years ago. The Dairy Queen moved a while ago.
So there's no chance of getting a dip cone there?
This goes behind the new distillery that the heritage, the distillery that the Chehalis Tribe installed a few years ago.
Any additional questions from the board?
No, I have no additional questions, but just as a safety mechanism, I would just ask that it be reviewed one more time once it's all settled by Legal, and then I'm fine with it.
Okay, but make sure that the template that's being used is still the current one, and that Legal has had a chance to look at it.
Sure. And then, just so you know, with any federal, with any project with federal funding in it, once we complete the right-ofway acquisition, it actually gets reviewed by the DOT as well to make sure it's in compliance with the federal regulations.
So there's multiple hoops that, okay, you have to go through. Okay. Any additional questions or comments, Commissioner Mensah? I saw your camera pop up.
I was just, I don't know if Ashley or Sheri have left the room. I was moving a little slow as we went through the last item. I guess I was just curious about the Amanda software extension and how that fits in with Acela, and, you know, I know the Amanda is like the old system, so is there, is there an update to be had on how all this fits? And why we have the need for this?
Perfect. Sheri is here, but I guess I'll ask from the rest of the board, are there any items on the Public Works item 3F? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Usually I run away as fast as I can. Okay, so the question is about why we're renewing Amanda, is that correct?
I think he just wanted a bit of an update, how that corresponds with Acela, and what's the?
So, that's a great question, because the Amanda renewal is from December through December. So we're renewing it for an entire year when the Acela project is slated to go live now in February. So it sounds like we've got 10 months that we're paying for that we don't need. But we haven't had a lot of luck keeping this project on track, so I anticipate it will probably be later than February, which is fine. And we will need time to clear the data out of the old application, so having it for one year is not gonna, it's not, it doesn't seem excessive to me.
Yeah, I'm thinking there could be challenges in moving the data from one software system to another. That's hard to believe, Sheri.
You haven't been paying attention.
And I think, to be fair to both IT and to CPIT staff, we really want to make a lot more progress on TC Connect and all that, it's really requiring a lot of resources before we jump into something else. And Josh, Sheri and I have been having conversations about Acela and about the user interface and our development community and some work we might need to do on that front so that it's a more seamless approach to transitioning folks from one to the other.
Not going to argue with that at this juncture. That, I think that's proven to be prudent approach.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to department items, starting out with Public Health and Social Services, item 4A, for Community Block Grant Public Services Contracts.
And we have Alex. Good morning, Commissioners. Alex First, Affordable Housing Program Manager. I'm joined by Sharif Hussain, our Affordable Housing Program Specialist. He's managing our Community Development Block Grant Program, so he's here today. I am here to ask you to approve six program year 2024 Community Development Block Grant Public Service contracts for a total value of $184,397, and authorize the Director of Public Health to execute our contracts. So Thurston County receives funding from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, for Community Development Block Grant Program, CDVG. This provides a variety of activities to serve low-income households and individuals. The funding is contingent upon a five-year consolidated plan and an annual action plan, which outlines specific projects to be undertaken during each year of our approved plan. This annual action plan is adopted annually by resolution, and you all adopted it in June of 2024. We have since received approval from HUD to continue with the projects that we have identified, and we, in August, we received our grant agreement and annual allocation. So now our staff in our office have completed our pre-contract requirements, which include environmental reviews and pre-contract meetings with subrecipients, and we're now ready to execute contracts for the activities that are identified as public services in our plan. The public service projects are listed in the AIS, and they include the Boys and Girls Clubs of Thurston County for Tom Water Club scholarships in the amount of $40,000, Catholic, forty, yes, $40,000, Catholic Community Services Southwest for the Community Kitchen at $3,200. Family Education and Support Services for their peer recovery specialists for $31,800. Senior Services for the South Sound for their Home Share Program at $15,000. The Thurston County Food Bank for the Home Delivery and Other Bank for $30,000. Together for Tom Water Community School Program for $64,397. So the total amount of funding is $184,397. This year, the 2024 program year projects, activities were selected by the Tom Water City Council. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Not seeing any. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 4B, which is a Home Visiting Services Account Nurse-Family Partnership Amendment, number 24-1176-02, contract number 24-1176, and we have Gretchen.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Gretchen Teller. I'm the Division Director at Community Wellness at Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, and I am here to ask for approval for Amendment Number Two for an additional $1,319,865.98 that will continue to allow us to serve 162 families with Nurse-Family Partnership Home Visiting Services in Thurston, Lewis, and Mason Counties. And this is with Department of Children, Youth, and Families, somebody that we've had ongoing funding with for several years.
Thank you. Any questions for Gretchen? Okay, not seeing any.
All right, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
Gretchen, please keep up the good work.
You have here.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm covering for Alicia Hughes for the next one.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, item 4C, WSDA Grant Number K5572 for Emergency Food Response Network.
Okay, so this is an inter-agency agreement for the amount of $93,817.87. This was a result of direct outreach to Thurston County, to Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder, right? And it has come over to Public Health, and this is a grant opportunity to facilitate county-directed procurement and distribution of emergency food to hunger-relief organizations. This agreement is part of the state's coordinated response to increase farm and food business viability for local farmers, reduce food access barriers for socially disadvantaged communities, and to increase food security while contributing to long-term emergency preparedness and food system resilience. As part of this grant, it requires 50% of the total funding commitment to be spent on purchase of food, either through direct food purchasing, or in our case, we will subcontract that out to the Thurston County Food Bank, South Sound Food Systems, South Sound Food System Network, and others. Part of this will also pay for staff for two hours a week for our Population Health Program Manager, Alicia, and then our Public Health Nutritionist will be involved for six hours a week.
Thank you. Any questions?
I guess I have a question, I mean.
Go ahead, Commissioner Mensah.
Lisa's not, I guess I'm a little confused on this. Is this distribution of emergency food, so is this like setting up ourselves to respond to something that might happen? Or is this something that we're, we're doing on an ongoing basis? And is this, and is this a new program? I don't recall seeing it before. So those are questions I have.
Yes, this is new, and, and part of, part of the work plan is to work with our emergency preparedness team for long-term planning. There will be some funds spent directly on, like, on food that, I was forgetting on the word, non-perishable foods that they will, you know, be able to have, but, so it is a piece of the work.
Jen, why don't you come to the table and just see if you, if you wanted, I saw you kind of pop up, so if you want to add to the discussion.
I have nothing more, because you just stated it correctly. Yes.
This was a new, Commissioners, this was a new grant opportunity through the Washington State Department of Agriculture, and so they had reached out to a number of jurisdictions and to see who might be able to step up and support the program. And so they made a targeted outreach to Thurston County, and we had an internal conversation with emergency services or emergency management, public health, as to who might have the ability to step in to provide the service. And so this is kind of a pilot for us. It's kind of venturing into a new area, but I appreciate staff's willingness to kind of, to step up and see how we can support those who may have food insecurities in our community.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions, Commissioner Mensah?
No, I think I'm good. Thank you.
I, I'm still, I guess the piece that I'm missing is like, how is this going to work, right? Like, so I'm just trying to connect those, those pieces out, and?
Predominantly, it will be through subcontracting to food banks.
To the food banks? And so we're going to be subcontracting with the food banks, and they're going to be purchasing directly from the farmers in case of an emergency, is that?
I think there's two parts to it. So I think part of it right now is to get, they will be purchasing from farmers to directly address some of the food insecurity. And when we, when we first started talking about this, Commissioner Mejia, one of the things I brought up is the, the contract that we did for formula shortage a few years ago, and how well that worked with the food bank. So it was definitely an area that we wanted to circle back to. So there's the piece of like addressing some of the food insecurity now, but then there's also this piece of like preparing for an emergency in the future, and how do we, how do we put some things in place, hopefully, that can help mitigate, you know, maybe another formula shortage or something like that.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. I'm not seeing any more hands up. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Use your time. Thanks, Jen.
Okay. Moving on to Public Works, item 5A is the Interlocal Agreement with the City of Yelm for the Cell of Anti-Icing Materials for Road Operations.
So I am going to be pinch-hitting for Mike Lohman, our Road Operations Manager, who's on a well-deserved vacation. Public Works Road Operations produces anti-icing material for use during winter operations. As quantities allow, Public Works will make available for purchase some of that material for other nearby local areas. for other nearby local agencies. The City of Yelm has contacted us with a need for anti-icing materials in support of their winter operations. They do not currently have the capacity to produce anti-icing material. The interlocal agreement before you today is a mechanism for Yelm to purchase anti-icing materials from Thurston County. The term of this interlocal agreement would be for five years. So again, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners to approve an interlocal agreement between Thurston County and the City of Yelm.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
And Matt, what's the price going to be, cost or flexible? What's the deal?
I believe it's 53 cents per.
Well, no, I, I don't, I don't care exactly what the dollar amount is, but it's got to break even or.
It's to recoup our costs. Yes. It, it is, it is set to recoup the cost of producing the salt rind.
And, and don't we do this with other jurisdictions as well?
Yeah, we have agreements with the City of Rainier, Tenino, I believe.
There's, there's eight or nine of them, intercity transit.
There's a lot of them.
So, so this is nothing new. We've been doing it for quite a while. Thank you.
Not at all.
Thank you, Icy Commissioner Fornier. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I want to say that we've, we've done this for several other jurisdictions, lots of them. Would this be an appropriate consent, consent calendar item?
Yeah, we believe it could be moved to the consent.
Is our Commissioner is okay with moving this item to consent? Thumbs up?
Absolutely.
Yeah, good with me.
Okay. So we'll move this item to consent. Okay, moving on to item 5B is the Resolution to Abolish Utility Funds Due to Utility Consolidation.
That's me, and I should have introduced myself when I spoke there just a moment again. Karen Wees, Public Works Assistant Director. So it's been a while, maybe, since we had some good news on the financial front, and I think this is a piece of that. Um. Right? The thing we can find for a financial win, right? So this is actually the culmination of a lot of hard work that has gone in over the years. The Board authorized, effective at the beginning of 2024, to consolidate our seven water and sewer utilities into one water and one sewer utility to take advantage of operational and administrative efficiencies. So that has happened with great success, I would say. And so this is kind of the last step in that process. And so this is a request to approve a resolution to abolish 10 different utility funds, our former utility funds, that have now been consolidated into a total of four.
For the hard work and perseverance moving that forward.
Big team. I got it done.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Always nice to abolish things.
Okay. So we'll move on to item 5C, which is the Resolution to Apply for Grants from the Recreation and Conservation Office for Burford Park Trail System.
Okay, so this is again my item. So we're asking the Board to approve resolutions to apply for two grants with the Recreation and Conservation Office. The RCO does require that the governing board authorize the entity to apply for these grants. These particular grants will be used, or would be used if successful, to, to do work on the Burford Park foot bridges and stairways. We do currently have a project on our CIP, our Capital Improvement Program, and in our budget. But that project is, the full scope of that project exceeds the current available funding that we have. We have about $500,000 earmarked, and under that amount of money, we would be doing the highest priority bridge and some stairs and handrails and the full design for the project. But to actually complete all aspects of that project would be about another $250,000. So these are two grant opportunities that we think might, if we are successful, be, would be used for completion of that project or put towards continuing that project as funding is available. And just as another side for the Board, this is something that we are collaborating with the Park Foundation to submit these grants. They are assisting us with some grant writing on this and also some letters of support and maybe meeting with the program managers for those grants themselves. So those grants are due at the end of October. This is the authorization for the Board to apply for those grants.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions. Love it. Go get it.
Sure, if I could, just, hey Karen, I know that it's not related to this item, but we at this table have talked about TC Connect from time to time. And I just want to thank you in this forum, because for the Public Works team, and I also know you're helping out on a larger level, you've shoulder a lot of work, and it has not gone unnoticed. Your leadership is really appreciated. So thank you for all of that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. You're not free from us yet. We have one more item, item D, which is Resolution and Call for Seal Bids for 2025 Overlay Project CP Number 98225.
Keeping with the theme of good news, Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to call for seal bids for the 2025 Overlay Project. This project will be advertised this year. However, we're coming into winter conditions, so it will not be constructed until the spring of 2025. Roads included in the contract include Marvin Road between Cairo and 22nd Avenue, 183rd between Sergeant Road and Old Highway 99, Old Highway 9 between US 12 and Old Highway 9. The overlay is expected to extend the life of these roads by 15 years. The estimated cost is $4 million and will be paid for with 1.1 million of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding, 1 million in refunding, and the remainder would come from the County Road Fund.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none. After that, we'll just review our studying items, and then we'll have a public hearing at 3:30, which is public hearing for the Six Year Transportation Improvement Program or tip for the calendar years 2025 through 2030.
The only thing I would add to what I've already presented, unless the, and the agenda items to set the public hearing, is to date, we have received no public comment.
Any questions? Thank you. That will conclude our agenda for October 15. So next on our agenda is Proclamations and Awards, and then also Advisory Boards and Commissions. I'll pass this directly to the Clerk of the Board.
For October 15th, we will have the Flood Awareness Proclamation, and members from the Emergency, Emergency Management will be in attendance to accept and present on that proclamation.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Advisory Boards and Commissions?
We have no updates today.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Seeing none. We'll go on to Commissioners' Items. We do have an executive session lined up, but I'm wondering if there are any Commissioner Items that we need to discuss before the executive session. Okay, I'm not, Commissioner Fornier?
I would say I have nothing.
Okay. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and call the executive session.
Just give us one second, Commissioner, so we can queue Travis up. It's probably, we have good progress this morning. We might be ahead of schedule.
Okay. Should I call, should I call it? Or wait?
Just wait for a minute. Yeah. You're on a good ship.
There's Travis. Okay, so go ahead and call the executive session. We're going to executive session for RCW 42.30.110, subsection 1I, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency litigation or potential litigation. This session will take approximately 30 minutes, and Board action may follow. It is 11, 9:39.
Okay, good morning. We are back from executive session. It is 10:09 and we were in executive session per RCW 42.30.110 subsection 1I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party. And public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. And no board action follows this executive session. With that, commissioners, any additional, any commissioner items that you would like to discuss at this time?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Okay.
Nothing.
Okay, so with that, we are adjourned. We do have an 11:00 AM appointed directors meeting. Thank you.